... order if we can stand to say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you everyone for coming. We have no visitors signed in wishing to speak. I did have a piece of written communication from a person running for the Erie Bosse's board that I can pass around just asking for our support from Raymond Carr. Don't believe, do we have any committee reports? No? Then we will go right into the superintendent's report.
Great, thank you. With the adjustment to our budget calendar, we have one featured presentation tonight with our high school administration and faculty. So it's my pleasure to welcome Mr. Pigeon and some of our high school teachers and administrators to shine a spotlight here on Amherst Central High School.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Mr. Schnell told me to hit the skate here. Perfect. Well, thank you very much. It's always a great opportunity, as Mr. Peddles would say, to shine a spotlight on Amherst Central High School and the wonderful things our students are achieving and their accomplishments, as well as the wonderful work of our faculty. So we're really excited about that. I'm joined with my partners, Mr. Scott Lonzac, Ms. Dan Abels, and Steve Appeler, our art extraordinaire is here tonight to tell you about his wonderful STEAM and art program and some, many of his colleagues, K through 12 art department are here. So thank you for coming. As you know from our fall presentation... I've got a delay on my hi-tech phone. We presented to you in the fall and we had a lot of exciting priority tasks and actions associated with year two of our strategic plan. So we're really eager to share those with you. If you can go to the next slide, Mr. Lonzac. First, I would have to recognize, you know, the great work of our high school action planning team. We meet annually in the summer and really dive into what the set of tasks are identified across the four, five-year plan. And we have a nice cross-section of pretty much a teacher from each one of our departments. We have paraprofessionals and staff on our team as well as parents. And we have the unique pleasure of having students on our team as well. And they give us fantastic input. And they're able to meet with us during the summer and give us input during the year and even attend some of our regular monthly meetings. We are within those pillars that we've really identified and carefully identified as a district, learning achievement, student life, and Amherst pride. We'll get a nice dose of learning and achievement today. It's one of our focus points of the presentation, as well as touch a few of the pillars of student life and Amherst pride. One of our big focuses this year and over the course of many years, but really honing in this year on STEM and STEAM and really taking a look at our technology integration and really preparing our students for being not only tech savvy, but tech proficient and really pointing them in a direction that they're prepared for careers that are going to touch technology or directly in technology. We're going to kind of isolate tonight in our presentation a lot of the A and STEAM, the art part of the component, and tell you a lot about our 21st century design course, which is in year three, two. And I'll give to you Mr. Steve Appeler, who will feature a lot of that program.
Okay, I am going to read some notes just so, because I've got a lot to say. This past summer, I was lucky enough to get an opportunity to work for four days in Detroit at the Henry Ford Learning Institute doing a design thinking symposium. Now, design thinking is sort of a relatively new term in education. It's definitely a new term in Western New York because it is a, it comes directly from the manufacturing and design industry. So if you could go to the next one, Scott?
Sure.
Just some simple things that when I started to think about what we were going to do with the design program at the high school, especially since we were going to undergo this giant, for the first time, capital improvement program. By the time our current fifth graders enter the workforce in 2026, more than 4 million jobs in the, will be disrupted, changed or eliminated by technology. At the same time, however, 48 new types of career opportunities will have been created. What is more, what is more, children today can expect to have more career changes than any previous generation. So to prepare our youngest citizens for an exciting and uncertain future, schools must build skills such as creative thinking, problem-solving, perseverance, effective communication, teaching our children to think like designers can foster this type of thinking. So what design thinking is, is it's very similar to, I don't want to show my age now, 15 years ago when brainstorming was, we're going to, everyone's going to brainstorm. They're going to figure out how to challenge things and come up with new and interesting ideas. Well, design thinking follows a five-step process that came out of the D-School, which is in Stanford, and works with a company on the West Coast called IDEO. And IDEO are really the game changers in this, in the sense that we now teach design, the program that we do has kids use five different steps. And in the case of the Henry Ford Learning Institute, a sixth step, which, if Scott can go on to the next slide, we'll talk about. So when we present a problem to the students, the first thing that we do is we cover a part of the sequence, which is referred to as empathy. And empathy is really about going to the user, being the person that is coming to you with a problem. So maybe the problem is how the lines in the cafeteria could flow better, how we could honestly take plastic out of the ocean, or how we could rebrand a restaurant so that it, their profits are better, their end-users, the people who go to that restaurant, will be happier. So the empathy part is where we send the kids either on the, on the computers, and we refer to it as beyond page one of Google, okay? So that they do some deeper research, it's sort of a deep dive. And to give you an example, in an ideal world like what I had this summer, we had a budget of $15,000 and we visited five different restaurants in groups. And we were to pick apart the restaurant for everything that we would change to make it better so that it would be a better dining experience. The next thing, no, you can stay on, Scott, I'm sorry, my hands are in the way. Is to define. So once we've done, once the students have done the research, then what we do is we sort of define what it is that we can do. Obviously, if it's something as big as the Ocean Clean Project, we're not going to be able to financially be able to do that. But maybe we could, on a local level, find a way that students could go out and clean one beach, okay? So what we do is with the definition phase is we synthesize all of the stuff, all the research that we've done, and we try and define it into two or three columns that we can then actually start to fix, okay? Which brings us to the idea. The idea is the brainstorming part. This is the part where kids just come up with any kind of idea that they can. And we have sort of the blue sky method where money is not an issue. And what's interesting about, as soon as you take the money part away from the kids, that's when the creative part really, really starts to, because they'll say ridiculous things. And sometimes those ridiculous things or parts of those ridiculous things are actually things that come, bring things to nature. Okay, now I can go to the next one. After that, we've, so we've researched, we've come up with some ideas, and then what we do is we go to prototyping. So what you see is students, and these pictures here, as you'll see students, these where they're from, they're brainstorming. And this is where the prototyping, where they're actually coming up with designs. In this particular project, the unit that we're currently working on, students are to develop their own skateboard company. So they, it has to be unique to their personality. And what was fun is because it's, because it's women's, International Women's Month, all of the girl students, their goal is to, how do we make a feminine skateboard company? It's really a male-dominated sort of design out there. So that's what Gabby is working in and involved. So the next part is, after they've done some prototypes, they would bring them, bring them back to the group or they would take them to the end-user, the person who's paying them to do this research, and have the opportunity to be tested, have their opinions about it. Maybe they don't like the polished theme, maybe they don't like the way things work, okay? And then we either are successful and we can move on to actual production, or we would in turn look at that prototype and go back to the drawing board. The idea, the basic premise of that whole circle is to teach kids to fail forward. That just because a prototype doesn't necessarily meet all of the standards, that it's not, you don't just throw the baby out with the bathwater, that we go back and we try and tweak the things to make it better. So the reflection part is, that's the part that's just added by HFLI. The reflection part is where the education from a teaching standpoint comes in. This is where we start to talk with the kids and say, what were the good things about this process? What were the weaker parts of this process? What would you do differently? Or we get to pat ourselves on the back and have a little bit of celebration of the fact that we have accomplished something. Okay, now we can go to the next one. So this is a typical project that we did last year. You see a couple of the examples out in the hallway. The James Dyson Foundation are the vacuum cleaner people, and they have a great online presence for education. And through their company, they have some challenges. And the challenge was to design a cardboard chair that could support the artist's weight. So this one, if you know the Bonja Girls, this one was Sonia Bonja. She weighs about 67 pounds. If I sat on that, it would be, it wouldn't end well, okay? And so what they would do is they would start where, this is an ideation. So starting with the basic design, working your way towards, in Simon's case, this is his full-size cardboard chair, but he was really, he's one of my AP students. He's also my son. So when he came back this fall, he was really driven to, he wanted to take this to the next level. So with a good $30 conduit bender and some electrical parts and some skateboard decks, he actually got to make his full prototype that anyone can sit on. That one will support all of us, okay? But through this process, the unique part about it is the kids get to see from sketch to idea to full-blown design. Once we have our new studio and once we have our new digs, this could honestly be made to scale on a 3D printer and a smaller version, which would then work as a prototype because all the work would be done. And you could take it to a company and they could make that as a full-size chair. Do you want to go to the next one? The next project is the acoustic cellphone amplifier. The idea behind this was, students had to make what we call an off-the-rack accessory for a cellphone. So the idea was is that it couldn't be technology, it couldn't have wiring. They had to make something that if you put your cellphone in it with the speaker on, it would become louder. This is Molly Sawyer's. Molly Sawyer came up with this idea. Her product is literally just this little device right there. It would cost about $7 to make or to sell. You could buy it at, say, someplace like Urban Outfitters. And the idea is it would fit your phone just like the cellphone case. So regardless of what size of phone you have, there would be a product that would match it. But then you would go home and you would take that, in my case, that old acoustic guitar that I never learned how to play. And I could cut a hole inside, which I said religious to the, to the music teachers, but slide this thing in, turn the speaker on in my phone, slide it in, and it would just use the acoustic resonance of the instrument in order to amplify the sound. The next step for her was to design a, come up with an ad campaign for it. She wanted to keep it very simple, like Apple's. That's why it's Acoustaphone, that has the iPhone actually in the title of it. And it's really, from a teaching perspective and watching the kids go through this process, it's really one of the most enriching things I've done in my 30 years of teaching. So... If you can go on to the next one. And then just to tie into using what we have in the community and especially using some of our alumni, some of you may know Julia Duhak. Scott, two years ago, I did a series of lectures where I had artists from Western New York that I know come in, and it was called the Artful Life Series. And the whole point of it was to have students, or former high school students who are now professors or artists, and to sort of try and plant that seed in our, in our community, honestly, that to be an artist is not necessarily a death sentence, that you can have a creative life and still make money. So along with Julia Duhak, Scott, Kevin Tiger, a sculptor, Scott Holmes, an animator, Ken Doyle, an animator, Felice Koenig, another painter, they all came and spent about two hours with our kids talking about their, their life from high school to where they are now and what it used to be creative, okay? The last thing I just want to say is, the neatest thing about this design thinking problem is that it can be used in almost any subject matter, okay? A perfect example would be the 24-year-old guy who came up with the idea to clean the oceans of plastic. He spent, he got $24 million worth of backing. He actually made it. They dragged it out into the ocean in September. It had some structural failure and the press was really, really quick to jump on, oh, this guy's a failure. We knew it wouldn't work. And because of his design thinking method, he reacted to the fact of, it's not a failure. We're going to drag it back to Hawaii. We're going to repair what we did wrong. It's a prototype. That's why it ends with the number one. So the next time they drag it out, it'll be number two. And to just show the kids in real time, that on a grand scale, that this is a kid that's six or seven years older than him, that they can really challenge themselves. We've kind of been going through a design thinking program with how we design our classrooms in the future. And it's been really cool and personal because due to retirements, I've had the opportunity to sort of kind of design what our art department's going to look like for the next 25 years. So thank you so much for your time. If you have any questions, I hope I can answer them.
Thank you, Steve. Definitely an exciting course. It is really where technology is meeting creativity. And we know from, it's been a theme for the past many years in our building. We know wanting our students to be innovators and entrepreneurial. And we know that that prepares them for what the future would look like, which is a disrupted marketplace, a lot of different types of jobs. But I think some of the common denominators are creativity and technical, technical skills. So that's where that, those two meets. And it's an exciting program. They've all been doing wonderful work down there. So we're really excited about that. Steve mentioned working with our alumni, and I'll share, Nan will share a little bit about some of the alumni themes we've put together in our strategic plan.
So I got a phone call from Dr. Dory Marshall, class of 38, last fall, looking to collaborate. She is actually on the admissions committee at the UB Medical School. And she was looking to collaborate with us because their goal is to mentor a diverse group of students. Many students to be, to stay locally and to go to medical school. Many students will enter college as pre-med majors, and it's a very, very rigorous program. And they'll become overwhelmed and many of them will not continue through that program. And so her goal is to help advise those, those students in that you don't necessarily have to be a pre-med major. There's five required classes as an undergrad to get into a medical program. Help them with their MCATs. And she, so here's a picture of her talking to the students. And she brought her, she brought her team, a couple of students. And the other gentleman is the dean of the medical school. And answered the students' questions and then took some names. Then the next, the next, the next event is for those students to travel down to the medical school to visit. And she was also a mentor. Some of you Windermere people may remember that she mentored, she brought her medical students in and mentored some of the little ones at Windermere also. So keeping with the UB theme, here's a picture, you can see of Dr. Atkinson, who is still resident and sent his three children through the program, hosted Mr. Pigeon and our science, our secondary science during Dr. Shanahan's Staff Development Day. And the day we're treated to lunch and a visit to the earthquake lab and had a wonderful day. The teachers were very, very inspired. And Dr. Atkinson and who was the other gentleman's name? Am I putting you on the spot? Sorry.
Yeah, you put me on the spot.
Sorry.
I didn't mean to come to me.
Anyways, it's okay. I just didn't want to leave him out, just in case. Dr. Atkinson's the ones I know. But anyways, and so then our students will soon be following too. And we have many teachers that are hoping to make a repeat visit back if...
Got it.
So keeping with the UB collaboration, I, through many different avenues, decided it would be really nice for us to recognize International Women's Day, which is celebrated globally, but for some reason just isn't recognized much in the US. And so I talked to Dr. Shanahan that I need a little help with this. And so she connected me with one of her students that she mentored, or professors that she mentored, Dr. Sarah Roberts. And along with her collaboration with some doctoral students and our social studies teacher, we are putting on an event this Friday. We got a little focus group of students together, and they came up with three topics that they would like to investigate: health, politics, and media. And so we have Ms. Eileen Buckley, the senior reporter from NPR, is going to come and speak, fourth period, 10:46 to 11:30, and then cover the event after that. And then we are, we have another, another professor from UB to do our STEM. And then we are Skyping for the political piece with the third, Dr. Garcia, who teaches at an elite university in Chile. And she will be Skyping with us, and that's going to be the political piece. And so one of our students, Courtney Wright, designed this logo, Mr. Appeler. I talked to Mr. Appeler about seeing if we could get some students together to design a logo. So he ran a little contest. And in the social studies department, we picked this. And also our theme is be informed and be inspired. And so you'll see this logo around on Friday. So certainly you're welcome to come.
Thank you, Ms. Abels. It was fun stepping in on some of those meetings because it really is a large group of our young ladies that have planned this event. And they put a lot of effort into it, and they're really excited about it. So we're really looking forward to that. Keeping with the alumni theme, you know, we're really, our goal within the strategic plan is to really develop deep networks with our alumni for them to really help and inspire our students and do some of that, make some of those connections to careers. You know, just a one-off situation in terms of how these things come about. I happened to meet Rob Mickleck this summer. He was in with his class of 73 for their reunion. They were doing a nice tribute to some of their classmates that are no longer with us. And we struck up a conversation and, a random conversation. At the end, he handed me a Ben and Jerry's coupon. Oh, I work for Ben and Jerry's. Free plain of, I'm like, oh, that's pretty exciting. And I said, tell me a little bit more about that. And he told me his story. Essentially, it's basically Ben and Jerry and Rob. He goes way back to their first location. He worked at the gas station that they took over in the 70s. And his journey was fascinating. It was definitely a 70s type of journey in terms of how he ended up in Vermont and how he ended up with Ben and Jerry's. But it was, it was a great connection. I said, boy, you, your story would be so inspiring for our students. We got to make some type of connection. Let's, let's, let's do a Google chat or some type of Google hangout, they call the, the technology. So we did. And we, we connected him with some of our classrooms. And the kids were in awe. They really were very interested in his story, how he ended up with Ben and Jerry, how he's still with Ben and Jerry, and what a unique position he has as a global director of social impact. So another, you know, great Amherst connection. He sent all the kids the same coupons. So we got a nice Ben and Jerry's pint out of the deal as well. So we really enjoy and really are excited about how often now, within the past couple of years, we are bringing in alumni. It's been, I think we get one a week in now. And Ms. Evans has done a great job with that, just from all different fields, all different age ranges, from recent graduates to, you know, some of our folks that are well along in their careers. So it's been very exciting.
Along that line of themes and careers, every other year, we won a very big college and career fair. And this year, we, we were determined to make it the biggest ever. We took over our whole South gym, and we had a tremendous amount of vendors come out, local employers, local corporate, and both small and large businesses from all different fields. We had a lot of students, that little clip you see up there is from a student organizer. But if you go to the next slide, Ms. Abels, you could see the type of folks that we have there. A lot of UB connections again, with a lot of our big employers and college partners. And the thing I think that's most gratifying about deepening our network with our local employers and the alumni is the, just how excited they are, how willing they are to not only help us, but you know, as they leave, what else can we do? You know, do you want to come take a tour? Do you want to do this? We have also got this program at our business. So it's really bearing, you know, a lot of fruit for our students. And we're determined to continue to widen that networking with our local employers and college partners and hopefully keep our sons and daughters here in Western New York. So that's an exciting part of it as well. Turn it over to Mr. Lonzac and some of his initiatives as well on your learning and achievement.
Sure, thanks, Mr. Pigeon. So again, going right along with priority, one of our strategic plan, a big highlight out of the Dean of Students' Office and also building wide is to really highlight and put a focus on school attendance. Obviously, with the great programs from our art department, STEAM, to our college fairs, they're all for not if our kids aren't here and attending regularly. So in addition to really working in close conjunction with our instructional support team, our student services team, to look at really what are the biggest issues, highlighting why students are not coming to school, we've also wanted to put a positive spin on attendance. So you may remember from the middle school, they launched a similar initiative last year. We've partnered up with them and we've continued that initiative at the high school. We call it the Everyday Counts Initiative. So what this is essentially doing is trying to put, as I earlier said, a positive spin on attendance. What we're looking at doing is, is highlighting four students every month who have had perfect attendance and then giving them shout-outs on some of the announcements, giving them phone calls home, giving them a little awards in the cafeteria and that sort of thing, to really highlight attendance on a month-by-month basis. But again, in addition to doing that, we're also doing a deep dive, kind of roll-up-your-sleeves, heavy-duty work for the students who are absent often. And we're doing home visits at times when there are mental health crises. As we're doing hospital visits, to really work with students to get them back into school and to be in a positive mindset that they need to be successful moving forward.
You know, under learning and achievement as well, one of the initiatives that we've really launched this year is kind of a PR campaign to really focus in on the New York State Advanced Regents Diploma. The Advanced Regents Diploma is definitely a crescendo for students. And it's something that we want our students to achieve. We have, you know, this year, for example, we have about 63% of our students achieve an Advanced Regents Diploma. And we'd like to get that up into the 70% range. And we don't want, just want that for the numbers sake. We want it for the students sake. Because that, it benefits them greatly if they can touch that extra achievement. And it is an enormous endeavor. There's a few extra key courses, a few gateway courses. One would be the third math and the algebra two. And then the language gateway comes into play as well. Or longer sequences in the arts, fine arts, music, and/or CTE. So there's a number, it's a little confusing, I guess, how you can get it. So we wanted to increase the awareness of it to the parents because in many ways, in Amherst, it's been baked into the sauce for very long. So we're not always very overt about communicating it to parents. And we found through conversations, even some book studies and article studies, that across New York State, there's some confusion about what is exactly an Advanced Regents... Am I getting one? Am I not getting one? So we wanted to increase some awareness. So we added a page to our website, and we're beginning to launch. And I showed this to our eighth-grade parents at the eighth-grade parent night last week. If you could play that video, just a simple public awareness. So this is an example of the type of message that we want to send to our parents that's kind of terse and targeted so that we don't get into the weeds in terms of how many different derivatives there, it could confuse people. You know, but we want people to be aware of the Advanced Regents Diploma. And we want them to be aware of it early because there's decision-making. They can make as parents and as students into the middle school that kind of helps that trajectory towards the Advanced Regents Diploma. So given with Steve's presentation, that's the first time we've played this to a wider audience besides... Does it make sense? Is it a prototype that makes sense in a sense? audience besides, "Does it make sense? Is it a prototype that makes sense and sends the right message?" Because I can also tweak it and reflect upon it, too. But you know, we want to, you know, send a clear message, and then if they need more and deeper information, we want to bring them to the guidance counselors and administration for more information. And I talked earlier about, you know, these are numbers that we're proud of, but we're also proud of the kids that do it. And the interesting part of Advanced Regents Diploma is you really get down to specific kids that have specific goals, and they really try hard, and they put that extra effort, and they go into January of the Regents, of their senior year, trying to get this. Olivia Sequino is a great example of that, of a student that worked very hard, set that goal, and it wasn't necessarily going to be something that was easy for her. It's something that she had a goal and worked a little harder for, and this is the words of Olivia on her Advanced Regents Diploma.
Hi, I'm Olivia Sequino, and I'm a senior in the class of 2019 this year. I set a goal to get my Advanced Regents Diploma. To do this, I took the Algebra II stretch course and five art sequences. In January, I just passed the Algebra II exam, and I'm really excited because this will better prepare me for college.
So...
Hi, I'm Olivia...
And that's the reward of that, is really those stories, the Olivias out there that set that goal, and Olivia will be better prepared for college for setting that goal and working harder in that math course to get that. And she did it in a non-traditional way in terms of her sequence, too. She got it through an art sequence. So she went two different non-traditional ways to get that Advanced Regents Diploma, but it meant a lot to her, and she will be better off because of it. Next slide, Mr. Lonzak.
Sure. As we briefly touched, we'll touch on just priority two here of our, I've got a three-year strategic plan, which is student life, and we just wanted to highlight with you a few of the additional things we've been working on, the new initiatives we've been launching at the high school to really educate the whole child. So as we've seen reports and studies, mental health, specifically teenage mental health, is obviously a big issue and a big highlight this year in New York State. And in conjunction with our Mental Health Initiative district-wide, we have been bringing in weekly therapy dogs. So every week, we'll either see Minnie or Carlo, and actually, I haven't got the name down, but I just met a new therapy dog.
There's a number of different ones.
Yeah, every Wednesday.
Therapy cats.
Therapy cats as well. But just a great way for students who are having a tough day to kind of de-stress and kind of break the ice when they're talking with their counselors. Oftentimes, we'll see students kind of taking a walk down to meet with the therapy dogs, and for many of our students, it's one of the highlights of their week. So just something we're doing to really help with our Mental Health Initiative. In addition to that, we are in the early stages of introducing, introducing, excuse me, restorative justice and restorative practices up here at Amherst High School. This is something that in the Dean of Students' Office, when we're dealing with student conflict, that we're working with students all of the time to really help mend and repair relationships, whether that's an internal friend relationship, or whether that's maybe a conflict that started in class, to ultimately help students learn from their mistakes and move forward in a positive light. A quick example of how this is being used in action is essentially four restorative questions that I myself and several of the student counselors are also using to help students work through issues. The first question, if a student's coming in and they're having a tough day, is essentially simply just, "What happened?" A real wide-open question that kind of helps students to kind of unload, so to speak, to talk about the issues that they're going through. The second question is really, "What you're thinking about, or what were you thinking about at the time, if you're having, again, an issue or a hard time struggling with something?" The third question kind of brings students full circle to think about, "What are their actions having, or what are those impacts of those actions on other people?" So them starting to take a bigger picture about, maybe they had a rough evening the night before, and then there's maybe a minor disruption in class, and then thinking about how that might have impacted the other students in the class, et cetera. And then the fourth question is, the hardest question for students, but it's, "What do we need to do here to make things right?" So it's helping students to start to think about their actions and how they need to repair a relationship, to move forward and have, again, a productive relationship with the teacher, or to repair maybe a broken friendship when we're talking about student conflict within friend circles. So we're in the beginning stages of restorative justice. Where we go from here is additional training, additional professional development, to really help all of our staff be well-versed in restorative justice practices, to just have another tool in the toolbox to help students really make the most out of their high school experience. And also, going along those lines of a restorative piece, and I know Mr. Pennella will share a little bit more about this with an op-ed coming up in the Amherst Bee, but really, when we look at e-cigarette usage nationwide, it's quite an epidemic for teenagers, and we are not unique here in Amherst High School to this epidemic. But in conjunction with the UB Smoking Research Facility, or Smoking Research Department, we've actually created and added an educational component for students who are dealing with e-cigarette issues. So in addition to school consequences and parental conversations, we have created and put into place multiple e-cigarette classes for students to really be informed about e-cigarettes and the dangers of them, the path to addiction. And actually, later this month, in partnership with the middle school, 6:30 to 8 o'clock in the middle school auditorium, we have a parental awareness night for e-cigarettes and really the dangers of them, not just facing Amherst students, but students across the nation. So we welcome you all to that, and that's coming up on March 28th.
Okay, the last piece is priority three, I promise. This is the last slide, second last slide. And we really, at priority three, really took a close look at wellness, and tonight's a perfect example of some great wellness things going on district-wide. We've been doing something focusing in on our faculty. We dedicated our December meeting, and December's a hectic month in schools for people personally, so we dedicated that meeting to some healthy habits and some healthier information, healthy teas, foam rolling, salsa dancing, yoga, our platform, which is a physical fitness digital motivator, as well as just some healthy foods and doing some healthy cooking. So that's, really got a nice buzz going in the building. I think once you do events like that, it changes the conversations. You start talking about healthy foods, you follow up on that. People drinking a lot of healthy teas and green teas and things of that nature.
Cinnamon tea, Greg. Thank you.
Yeah, we got a lot of cinnamon tea drinkers, green tea drinkers, which is very good. And we wanted to follow up. We didn't want things to be one and done. So this month is, the next slide, Mr. Lonzak, would be Wellness Wednesdays. So tomorrow, we kick off our Wellness Wednesdays with a little bit more tea and some healthy snacks. The highlight of the month will be our chair massage. As we did that last year, we'll be doing it again, a two-day event for our staff to really partake in that, and it's a fun and healthy thing to do, as well as sponsoring a healthy salad bar one of the Wednesdays, and we'll kind of cap it off with a nice healthy yoga class. So we're excited about that, and it's really been a fun theme within the year. So I want to thank you for your time. I appreciate you taking the time to really pay close attention to the wonderful things going on in the building. We're really proud of that, and follow us on Twitter and like us on Facebook. Any questions?
The Friday event, is that a school-wide event, or is that?
It is. International Women's Day. The social studies classes will cycle through. If they're teaching during lunch, it's open to any students who have their lunch, and then students that are able to be excused from class. With all of the snow days we've had, we didn't want to make anything mandatory, so... But we should have, we should be able to cycle many of our students through.
The e-cigarette informational class, you said you were doing an adult middle school thing. Are the middle school children, to your knowledge, also being exposed to that information?
So that's open to parents of all Amherst High School and middle school students. We're really encouraging parents of middle school and high school students to really come out. And we have speakers from ECC Pasta, which is Erie County Coalition for Prevention of Alcohol Substance Abuse, who are right on the front lines of the e-cigarette epidemic, coming out along with the facilitators of our own e-cigarette informational classes. These are master students at UB who are really going into school districts all around the area, and really getting and kind of, again, rolling up their sleeves and speaking with students who have kind of been exposed to e-cigarettes, to talk about the patterns and their own interactions with them. So we're welcoming parents district-wide, but it's really geared towards secondary, parents of secondary students to come in and really have information and awareness of e-cigarettes and the dangers, and how to speak to students and their children about e-cigarettes, so they themselves are aware of really what's going on.
We have integrated the information into health classes.
Yes.
Which all students take in middle school, as a result of the need to get the message to the kids as well.
Good, thank you.
I think that was what you were looking for in terms of the middle school.
Yeah, I was just, yeah. Because I, you know, I already know, but my kid, you know, I don't, you can tell your kids, but they need to hear it from somebody other than me. They don't believe me.
Yeah, getting that message out in early and often, awareness to students, this is paramountly important.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
I just want to add a couple of quick points. You know, you had, I'm glad you had the pleasure to meet some of our art teachers. Olivia Sequino, who is in the video, is the young lady who made, one of the young ladies who made the pottery for you for Board Appreciation Week, so it was nice for you to be able to put a face with that name. Many school districts are working towards STEM integration. It's a popular thing now, given the workforce demands that are forthcoming, but very few have done STEAM in the meaningful way that we've been able to do it here. I think a lot of people will add DA in there for the arts, but to see how it's been put together by our teachers and at the high school is truly remarkable, because most people are unable to find meaningful ways to integrate the arts within science, technology, engineering, and math, and I'm very proud of what we've started to do, and I'm very excited about where we're headed, once we upgrade the facility and really have the tools to continue with what we're doing. So nice job with that. We will, it's going to be a media frenzy at the high school this week, in addition to NPR broadcasting on Friday. Tomorrow, you know, set your DVRs. We will also have Melissa Holmes from WGRZ to feature in her Great Kids of Western New York series. Our students who just traveled to Costa Rica to help upgrade the school for the children there. So we will let you know when that's going to air, so you can check out that segment. And then the last piece I wanted to mention was, to mark your calendar for that e-cigarette forum, which Mr. Lonzak just mentioned, March 28th, 6:30 to 8. It's very important for our adults to learn how to talk to their kids about this, because unfortunately, there are companies out there advertising e-cigarettes as a means for adults to quit smoking, which unfortunately sends the message to youngsters that it may not be as harmful as smoking cigarettes, but the level of nicotine that is contained in an e-cigarette is tremendous, and the addiction is quite a problem for kids at a young age if they're experimenting with it, so mark your calendars for that one. Thank you very much, Amherst High School representatives and our art teachers who are here. Job well done, and I appreciate you taking the time to be here. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just got some information for you guys, if you want to learn more about design thinking. I put some packs together for you.
Thank you.
Particularly the last page, there's some great YouTube videos. It was studied on Nightline years ago, particularly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Appller, I love that you are so enthusiastic about it, and so...
Well, what's interesting is, when I took over the chair there, we had a very traditional design and illustration program, and moving forward, graphic design is a field that is, has like 1% growth rate by 2025, but what goes along with that and sort of meets in well with it is product design and an online presence. So if we can teach kids graphic design, but also how to do website design and digital imaging editing, and so once we have these new digs, as I constantly refer to them, the way that we'll be able to brand this district, have our students brand this district, like I was just joking around, when I was hired in 1995, those posters were on the wall here. So that will be one of the first things that we do with graphic design.
Those kids are approaching retirement.
Yes. Are you in one of those? But thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it for the superintendent's report.
All right, thank you. We will need a motion for new business items.
Motion for new business items, E1A through H and 2A and B.
We will second.
Mr. Smith, any discussion?
All right, all those in favor of new business items, E1A through H and 2A and B, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries 7-0. With that, I'd like to welcome Kristin Pfeifer, is it? Pfeifer? To our, to our team, so welcome aboard. We look forward to working with you.
I'm really excited.
Awesome.
Thank you.
So, do we need to follow up actually?
Just to follow up on Mr. Pennella, he's going to be letting you know when the Melissa Holmes segment will air.
Okay, perfect. We will need a motion to convene to executive session.
I'll make a motion to convene to executive session for matters regarding employment of a rich and wealthy person.
You can second.
I'll second.
Great. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Thank you.